Invisible. Deliver the justice for all.
I'll need order. Looking for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Bye.
Aye. Oppose? We're gonna have two of them again, approval of minutes from Monday, March thirty first.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. I'll second.
That motion in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Minutes from April sixth.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number one. Approved Class C Retail Alcohol License. For R's Tavern Incorporated.
I'll make a motion to approve the. Didn't make a motion.
Class C Retail Alcohol.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, approved Platts. We have one requested by Joe's Joseph. Joe Reisberg owned by Joseph and Alyssa Reisberg on Hawthorne at two hundred and seventieth. We have another one. Requested by Ron Burdine owned by James and Rita Detlinger Family Trust on two hundred and twentieth and Velvet.
I'll make a motion to approve those, both those Platts. I'll second.
We have a motion in second to approve that class. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, review and consider for approval fiscal year. Twenty-six Carroll County Professional Paramedics Association Union Agreement. Same thing we had last week, and I believe the call pay went from eight fifty to ten dollars an hour and a fifty per, or a fifty cent. Per hour. Um, to each tier. On their pay. Any question?
Again, I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Have a motion second, any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Item number four. Snyder and Associates Presentation. From Highway Thirty Coalition, Adam Schwers is here to present. And a little background, I think it's been probably five years ago, the.
Give me a second, you're gonna set it up, Adam.
Um, I think five years ago, the county paid five thousand dollars for a seventy-two thousand dollar study, I believe.
There you go. Hold on. There you go, there you go.
Is that correct, team? We paid five thousand like five years ago for the study, and I don't think. I've seen the presentation before, but I don't think it's ever been delivered to the Board of Supervisors. Yeah, so with that, do you know everybody here, Adam? I think you do, okay. Introduce yourself and fire away.
Alright, so, um, Adam Schwers, I am the, uh, president of the Highway Thirty Coalition. And, uh, have done so for a little over, uh, twelve, thirteen years now. Um, the, uh, study that you're referencing, we, uh, as a coalition. Uh, commissioned a study, uh, back in about twenty twenty-one. And, uh, completed it, uh, early twenty twenty-two. And, uh, this would be the first, uh, time that a volunteer coalition. Has, uh, permission to study such as this. Normally, these studies are conducted by the Iowa DOT. Uh, but, uh, we were able to, uh, pull together a number of funding partners, uh, including the county. Uh, we really appreciate your support in that. A little bit of background and some history here. Um, I've been involved with the Highway Thirty Coalition for probably about fifteen, sixteen years. I took over as president. A few. About thirteen years ago, after a gal from Eastern Iowa who'd been running the coalition. Uh, decided to step back and, uh, a couple of years later actually passed away. Her name was Edith Beth Peffer. Uh, from Clinton County, and she was, uh, really a champion for transportation throughout the state. Um, Edith, uh, did a lot of work with our legislators. Uh, back in the day on a lot of federal bunnies working its way back here. I'll be a through Grass Leader, the other, uh, federal congressional officers. Um, uh, the, the completion of Highway Thirty is a four-lane road from Ames to Marshalltown. She certainly gets a lot of credit for that. Uh, during that period of time, uh, Grass's office frankly called her and said, hey, we've got some transportation money. Um, where should we put it in Iowa? And she said, there. And, uh, she was from Clinton County, so she was thinking about the state as a whole. Uh, she wasn't just thinking about her own backyard and, um, as a coalition, uh, that's what we've continued to do. Uh, so when I took over the coalition, um, with my background in IT, kind of wanted to bring us a little bit more into the digital world. Um, certainly, uh, she had a lot of contacts with the federal and state legislatures and the governor. Um, through my, uh, time as Mayor of Carroll, um, I also had some of those, uh, contacts, so that helped, uh, keep that dialogue going. Uh, certainly, I've been involved with the, uh, CCGP. Uh, trip to Washington DC over the last decade or so, and we've, uh, often times brought this topic. Uh, for those in the public, um, that may not be aware, um, Highway Thirty Four Lane has been one of the number one priorities for Carroll County. Uh, for decades. And, uh, so as a, as an appointee, um, I really wanted to look at Highway Thirty the same way as, um, my predecessors did. I wanted us to be a coalition that was not fractured. I didn't want to be just focused on Western Iowa, uh, whereas she wasn't just focused on Eastern Iowa, so. Back in about, uh, twenty eighteen, uh, there was about thirty or so people who attended, uh, DOT Commission Meeting in Shenandoah, Iowa. And, um, we had, uh, probably a roughly ten or twelve of us from Carroll that went down. We had people drive all the way from Clinton. We had people from Missouri Valley. Uh, that all attended that meeting, and at that time, one of our, um, the, one of our, um. Longtime supporters was Dave Rose. He happened to be the chairman of the DOT Commission at that time. And at that time, they called for a vote, uh, to make Highway Thirty a priority corridor that would be finished as four lane. And it was, uh, voted on by the commission, um, with a majority vote. Uh, later on, however, um, with the new DOT Commissioner appointment, uh, that came into the DOT. Uh, he really wanted to look at transportation for the state only at ten thousand, uh, foot level. And when I say that, uh, he was thinking globally, not locally. Uh, he was more concerned about interstates. He was more concerned about, uh, barges. Uh, he was more concerned about rail. Um, he actually at one meeting in Carroll County, uh, did not make very many friends when he made the comment that he didn't want to see another four-lane road developed in the state of Iowa. And, uh, that really, um, burnt a lot of, uh, people. And, uh, upset kind of the apple cart of the, uh, momentum that we had going. The Highway Thirty Coalition supported Highway Twenty, uh, since the seventies. Uh, knowing and, and being told that once Highway Twenty was completed, Highway Thirty would get, um, the next attention for the state. And, uh, so, uh, we helped as a coalition, uh, to continue to support Highway Twenty, uh, through their efforts. Um, letter writing, talking to legislators. We attended the, uh, Transportation Days, which we organized by, uh, Shirley Phillips. And, uh, a number of folks on Twenty, and eventually the ten cent gas tax was passed. And, uh, that ten cent gas tax was important because it's a constitutionally protected, uh, measure for the state. All monies that go into the transportation. Um, for the state, um, are protected and have to be used for our roads and our bridges. And so, uh, with that, um, we thought we had moved the needle. Uh, we saw some progress going on upon Twenty. Uh, there was approximately forty miles left. And, uh, eventually in, uh, October of twenty eighteen, they opened, um, Twenty and completed Twenty. And, uh, so we felt that, you know, certainly it's our time. Uh, you've seen, um, some progress on Highway Thirty. Certainly, if you've driven east, uh, we have got, um, Highway Thirty completed, uh, all the way to Benton County. Uh, so all the way over to Cedar Rapids, now you can take Highway Thirty and/or there's a, a few small, um, things that they're finishing up in the program over the next, uh, year or so. Uh, but that whole section will be open, and we've already seen a, a tremendous uptick in the number of people that are now driving Thirty over to Iowa City and then dropping down to Interstate Eighty. So it's relieving some pressure, uh, between Des Moines and Iowa City, which was the intended, um, result. Uh, for us as a coalition, um. We started to see through the DOT's, um, leadership that they kind of latched on to this discussion of not building four lanes. Uh, from that previous director, and so, uh, we've been really working hard to educate the coalition. Uh, or the, uh, the DOT Commission and the DOT staff about how important Highway Thirty is for the state. And, um, because the, the DOT was looking at the section, the forty mile section from Lisbon, Iowa to DeWitt. Um, and considering a super two, similar to what you see from Carroll to Dennison. Um, our concern, uh, was that super two is not the direction that we need to go. Um, it does not promote economic development. It does not promote safety for our drivers. It does not help our ag partners. And, uh, one of our large ag partners is of course ADM. Uh, ADM is located in, uh, Cedar Rapids. Uh, they own a couple billion dollars worth of, uh, access to terminals on the Mississippi River. Uh, some of you might remember back in about ten years ago. As, uh, some of you might remember about, uh, ten, maybe twelve years ago, uh, former Governor Branstad signed a, uh, significant, um. Uh, soybean agreement with China. Uh, that certainly impacted ADM. We're shipping a ton of soybeans to China, uh, so it certainly is important. From our perspective, um, yes, the terminals and the bridges and, or the terminals and the, uh, rail, uh, are certainly important for that global, uh, aspect. But we still gotta get our product, uh, to the elevators and to the rail. And as we're seeing our bushels continue to increase, uh, gone are most of the days of, of, uh, grain carts. Things have been adopted by semi because of, of the, the sheer quantity. Uh, so as an agricultural partner. Um, our responsibility is to think about those workers that are on the, the corridor. And those people that are trying to bring, um, raw goods into our elevators or possibly ship, um, uh, feed mill, um, or food grade stuff out of their elevators. Um, most of those are going to be traveling by semi. Uh, some of them travel by rail, uh, but certainly the inputs are coming in off of Highway Thirty. Um, so as we think about the total economy for the state of Iowa, uh, it is important for us to say, okay, well. If the DOT is, is kind of latched on to the super two thing, we need to really play some offense here. And it was encouraged by, uh, Debbie Durham, our, our, uh, State, uh, Director of Economic Development, that we come up with, uh, some hardcore data and some hardcore numbers. So our coalition went out and over the period of about three, uh, months, uh, con- connected with about seventeen to nineteen, um. Private partners, uh, those being, um, some cities, counties, economic development groups, uh, private, uh, businesses. Uh, certainly, we've got some private businesses here even in our area who've been strong supporters, even like Windstar, and that's tourism, you know, I've talked a lot about agriculture, but they're running up. A tremendous number of buses up and down the, the highways. And so from the safety of the people that are on those buses and for their drivers, it's been very important for them to think about. You know, how is this, uh, how are all of these additional semis and all of this additional congestion that's hitting Highway Thirty going to impact our business from the long term? And, uh, how can we make sure that people are getting places the safest that they possibly can? Uh, so we commissioned Snyder and Associates out of, uh, Acapulco. Uh, to look at an economic study as well as an engineering study. And, uh, the reason we chose Snyder and Associates is because they had a, um, a big background in working with all of the studies up on Highway Twenty. So it was just a natural fit. They've been doing transportation in the state for a long time. They're a trusted partner to the DOT. Uh, they've got a great staff. And Wade and his team, uh, went to work on the study for us. Um, his team brought in, uh, Mike Lipsman, and Mike is an economics, uh, person for the state of Iowa, has been since the late seventies. Actually started out as a economics person for the Iowa DOT, but he has also done economic studies for almost every other branch of, of Iowa State Government. Uh, so, uh, you talk about somebody who knows the state, um, Mike is, is, is a trusted partner, somebody who is respected. Um, he has his own consulting firm and does a number of different studies, both at federal as well as state level. And, um, so they contacted him. We went to work on this study. And, uh, with that, I've got a little PowerPoint that I can kind of walk us through. It's a very abbreviated version, so. Um, Mike's report was upwards of three hundred plus pages. We're not gonna cut through that today. Uh, certainly, uh, the engineering study has a, a lot of, um, additional data as well. Um, this is a lot more, more condensed version, but I'll try to get the high points for you.
Just let me know next slide to Adam. I'll, I'll go through your presentation for you, buddy. It's sharing on the screen right now.
Okay, so yeah, we can go ahead and hit the next slide. Um, so this is a, a study that I then turned around and presented to the Iowa DOT. Uh, we kind of lined this meeting up and presentation up today a little bit last minute. Um, I certainly, if you would like to, I can always, uh, get ahold of Wade at Snyder. He can certainly answer some questions. Or maybe we can set up a Zoom call if you have some follow-ups. I'll try to do my best, uh, from, from a high level. Uh, so, uh, with the study, uh, we did an economic, uh, analysis. Um, they did a concept layout. Um, they did cost opinions, um, and then, um, certainly, um, kind of that return on investment piece. A lot of people want to know how that's going to impact them. Uh, so those were the things, and, and as you can see here, um, I talked about the forty miles from Lisbon to DeWitt because that's not currently in the DOT program. Um, I also, um, highlighted the forty miles, uh, coincidentally from Ogden to Carroll. And then our, our, uh, group has also been, uh, instrumental in promoting the, uh, um, bypass of Missouri Valley at their request. As well as working with the Army Corps of Engineers on a levee to protect their community. About fifty percent of their community is in a floodplain over there. And, uh, they have, uh, a significant number of, uh, truck traffic that runs right through Missouri Valley. And unfortunately, the setbacks in their downtown are very, um, minor. And they're actually running into, um, problems with all of the vibrations from the trucks now starting to cause some, uh, structural integrity issues. Uh, with many of their downtown buildings. So, uh, the idea is is to get their community out of a floodplain, to be able to properly bypass the community to. Protect their investments. And, uh, ultimately be a good interstate partner, uh, with all of that traffic that's headed out into, uh, Western Nebraska and Central Nebraska. Um, many of you that might be, uh, familiar with agriculture, we've got, uh, a lot of our pollers and our producers are headed out that. Uh, way to Blair and things of that nature on an almost daily basis. Uh, and so we're listening to those, uh, partners as well. Uh, one of the things that I do like to also highlight, and, um, I received a letter from somebody on a local level here recently, and. Um, I haven't had a chance to type up an, uh, a response to them, but I think sometimes people are confused. With what Highway Thirty as a state highway and our four-lane promotion is. Versus all of the discussion you're hearing in the Des Moines Register and in the newspapers about Interstate Eighty and the six-lane expansion. Two completely different things here. Um, Highway Thirty being a state highway, um, Interstate Eighty being, uh, very much a, an interstate highway, uh, four-lane versus six-lane. Um, we have also been promoting what we call the Rural Four, uh, concept of development. And that is, if you drive up to Highway Twenty and you head west, uh, through Correctionville and Mobile, you'll find that Highway Twenty was developed. Uh, so that you're running four lanes between the communities, and then you neck down and you go through the communities, and then you resume. Four lane outside of the communities, and what that did was save millions of dollars on overpasses and off-ramps. And property acquisition, and it also, um, doesn't disrupt our, our farming communities. Um, you know, all of our farm ground is very important, and we, we recognize that. Uh, we as a coalition have been endorsed, um, and have letters of support from both Farm Bureaus in Cedar and in Clinton County. Um, on this rural four concept because they recognize that as the world is changing and our inputs are going up. Uh, that we need to continue to look for ways to diversify, uh, in terms of how, uh, we're selling our products, uh, whether it's raw goods or whether it's finished goods. And, uh, they know that, the, 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 whether it's the Packers or whether it's ethanol, or whether it's biodiesel, or whether it's manufacturing, um, or food grade. Um, that those things are going to continue to evolve and continue to be a big part of why we're going to be able to protect our, our agricultural farmers. Uh, in terms of what their prices are, but you need to be able to continue to provide them opportunity and diversity in terms of how they're selling their product. So, we've been endorsed by the Farm Bureau with this Rural Four Concept. What we're doing is, is we're using the existing corridor. We're using the existing right-of-way, and we're minimizing as much, uh, of any additional right-of-way purchase in order for us to create this four-lane road.
So quick interruption. Right now, the only bypass plan is around Missouri Valley, nothing around Carroll, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So right now, um, if you look at it, uh, Highway Thirty between Carroll and Glidden has been one of the most highly traveled and highly trafficked roads in the state on a two-lane level for decades. And it continues to be. Uh, so if you can picture it, you come right out of Carroll and the existing four-lane that's already there, uh, we get up to, um, just shy of Glidden, and then they would deck that down. We would go through Glidden. Um, we've been told that there's enough right-of-way, um, just in Glidden to not really, um, impact any of the businesses that we could probably put a turning lane in there. Uh, just so that we can keep that traffic going, but also creates safety, uh, for those people that are trying to turn. Um, we have a lot of folks that come in from Calvin County up in Lake City and, and hit that Dairy Mart intersection, and then, you know, head into Carroll for work or for commerce or what have you. Uh, so we're, we're really trying to make sure that we don't disrupt existing businesses on the corridor while also protecting that, that farm brand investment. And so, uh, that just kind of gives you a little bit of an idea, but then from there, certainly on the, uh, eastern side of Glidden, then we can go back to a four-lane road. Uh, we can take that essentially all the way to Jefferson, and Jefferson is very wide over there in terms of, uh, what their capabilities are. There's already turning lanes existing there, so. Uh, once again, uh, go through and kind of use that existing corridor, not disrupt any of those businesses, uh, the school, the casino, what have you that are along there. And then as you get outside of, of, uh, uh, Jefferson, um, certainly you're back at a four-lane road over to Grand Junction. The reason. Uh, that Grand Junction is going to be promoted, uh, or, or recommended for a bypasses is because we've got, uh, vehicles being held up on Highway Thirty. Uh, with the plant north of town and the rail spur that's there, so, uh, taking the road south. Um, and, and avoiding that will keep that traffic moving at a, at a safe level and not have us backing up traffic, um, on. For many, many minutes, so. Uh, that's really literally the only thing on this side of the state that, that, uh, we saw from a, from a bypass perspective recommendation. Uh, we've had conversations with smaller communities on the eastern side of the state. Um, some of those communities are asking, uh, for a bypass, and then some of those communities are, are perfectly happy with, uh, the, the rural, um, four concept. And, uh, the, the one community that was asking for the bypass, uh, was supported, uh, by the agricultural people because, uh, they've got. Really very narrow Highway Thirty running through their community. Uh, they are using a lot of the parking there for their businesses. They've got a community that's kind of split where there's residential and schools and daycare and residential and what have you here. So for them, it's also a safety factor to try to reduce the amount of traffic that's going through their community at that level. Um, so, you know, we're, we're listening, and, and we're doing everything we can to talk to people, uh, up and down Highway Thirty. Uh, so we can jump to the next slide. Uh, next. So we went into an economics analysis, and, uh, as I said, if you go to, uh, Highway H W Y, the number thirty, coalition dot com. You can click on resources on our website. And on, and under resources, there's a, a number of articles that we've done, uh, presentations we've done to the DOT for decades. But if you scroll down and you look at anything that dated twenty twenty-two, that's where you're gonna find the full economics, uh, report from Mike. You'll find the full engineering, uh, study from Snyder and Associates. I'd just like to point that out because it's so very abbreviated. Um, what we asked, uh, or was is truly when we're looking for numbers, we need to look at hard comparison, right? So they analyzed, uh, Highway Twenty, they analyzed Highway Thirty, and they analyzed Interstate Eighty just to do a comparison. Um, Highway Thirty is the most populated, most trafficked, has the most businesses, and the most economic impact in the state outside of Interstate Eighty. And really, the only reason Interstate Eighty is there is because it runs through the mall. So, um, when you hear Highway Twenty and the, the over billion dollars worth of investment we've put there for the last thirty years. And you look at their traffic count, their economics impact, their population. Um, Highway Thirty is, uh, well over five hundred and fifty thousand people. Uh, so you talk, you think about a, a state that's about three point two million, uh, certainly we're, we're the second most populated, most trafficked corridor in the state. So why wouldn't we be looking at four lane Thirty? And, and so that's been our question. Um, our economics person, um, did a great job. Uh, Mike did a nice job of really looking back at the history of each of these corridors, the development of those, so he went back about thirty or so years. And they also kind of future casted where things could go, uh, or will likely go based upon the, um, data that we have as of today. Recent census data, um, you know, recent, uh, um, sales tax, recent, um. Business growth, uh, community growth, population growth within counties, or, or possible small shrinkages. Um, all of those things were taken into account, so he covered all of that for us very nicely. Um, his summary. Um, examine economy or his analysis was to examine economic trends for Iowa and its counties in relation to the, those three major corridors I talked about. Um, he then looked at demographics, he looked at characteristics, he identified factors that influenced things in terms of population, employment, economic growth. Um, he identified major factors that have disrupted county growth and trends, and then he estimated how future population and economic growth would go. So next slide. So his conclusions, and I'm just kind of jumping right that, right to that. Expanding US Thirty to across Iowa is an important element of a comprehensive economic development strategy for counties located in the corridor, uh, for all of Iowa. Uh, expanding US Thirty Four Lane across Iowa will continue to require the support of local governments, businesses, um. Critical needs including a, a growing workforce, affordable housing, good schools, and access to healthcare, recreation, and shopping opportunities. Most importantly, economic development requires strong local leadership, plus technical and financial support from the state. I would even expand that to the Fed. Um, anticipated economic growth in the counties that compromise, that comprise US Thirty Corridor based on population employment. Economic output forecast justifies expansion of Highway Four Lane across the state. So that's a very bold statement, um, but it's backed up by a tremendous amount of data, and that's. You know, that's, that's what we had been saying, but to have somebody who's in a professional capacity to look at all of the analysis, to take the time to, um, you know, really dig in. That this was really important for us to see and to hear. It was really just, um, letting us know that we were on the right path. Uh, I have been in contact with and delivered a number of presentations to the DOT at their public inputs, and they had some of their meetings in Ames over the years. Um. Previous to this study, I would work with the Soybean Association or the Iowa Corn Growers or the Pork Producers. And we would pull together all of the information on how much they had in terms of goods that were moving across Thirty. And we would just present on those small pieces, just to continue to allow them to hear how important Highway Thirty was. Um, he's taken all of that, wrapped it all up into the study, and, and certainly his conclusion is, is, is stating that. So, um, next slide. So we can kind of take a look at design. Um, I thought it was interesting the way Snyder looked at, uh, designing Highway Thirty. Um, he looked at the, uh, the, the, how Highway Thirty was originally developed, and then he broke it, they broke it down into segments. Um, so the development of Highway Thirty, uh, these two forty-mile sections specifically that I'm talking about. Um, one you'll see here is, is a, a four, uh, piece section and one's a five-piece section. Um, so I also like to let people know, this is not something that happens overnight. Um, this is a very long-term plan. Uh, when you hear people say, well, we just can't afford that, you gotta think about spreading that cost out over a decade or more. Um, the DOT is in control of a multi-billion dollar budget. Uh, what we ask from the DOT is that we continue to try to keep that funding split about fifty-fifty. Fifty percent goes to state highways and rural, and fifty percent of it can go to the interstate. Certainly, if, um, the tides turn at the federal level and they decide to, um, take funds that they are able to either do cost savings through. Or pass budgets on, and they decide to actually make, um, infrastructure one of their key pillars. Uh, you're going to see some federal investment come in. Most of that federal investment now is going to be pointed at the interstate. But what does that do for the state of Iowa? It certainly free up some of our local constitutionally protected funds to then go into our rural, um, highways and our rural. County roads and our rural bridges. So, you know, that's, that's, that's the, the, the thought, and that's kind of how the budget is looked at currently in its current state. What we don't want to see is, is the Iowa DOT Commission continue to think of urban. And start plugging more than fifty percent of the budget into projects on Interstate Eighty or I thirty-five. And focus only on our rural, our, um, urban population centers. Um, so, you know, we're, we're kind of playing offense and we're always playing defense, uh, because, uh, we have a lot to offer. And, um, certainly, I, I strongly believe that our rural counties and our rural communities are driving the success of the state of Iowa. Um, certainly, we've got. Um, certainly we've got um, great things happening, uh, maybe in, in uh, attracting healthcare businesses. Or IT businesses or finance businesses to the state, but at our core is going to always be rural. Feeding the world, fueling the world. Uh, those are the key things. We've got to be able to get our products up and down these corridors. And into our elevators or to our manufacturers and then get their products out to the world. Uh, as you look at traffic volumes by county, uh, your average daily traffic count in Carroll, you can kind of see this in twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen, twenty. Uh, eighteen, um, he's kind of showing uh, Carroll, Green, Boone, Cedar, Clinton. Uh, because we're focused right now on those two forty mile sections. Uh, at, on the eastern side of state and uh, here in, in west central Iowa. Um. We can go to the next slide. Uh, design speed. Um, so seventy uh, with a sixty five mile an hour post. So you know, everybody's aware, people go eighty on eighty. Good, better and different. And uh, you know, you know, if you're on our rural highways, um, you know, you're gonna have a, up, jump up onto twenty, it's posted at sixty five. Generally speaking, you're gonna be fine going seventy. Um. Not only is speed uh, important to our workers, but when we think about consistency. And being able to um, not throw curveballs at drivers. Not only do we have more semis on Highway thirties, but you think about all of our implement dealers. And they're trying to move equipment maybe from one dealership to another. And how many times do you see, you know, maybe a spreader or something is needing to be moved? Um, whether it was just sold or maybe it's, it's coming in for some type of repair. Or some type of a disc system that's being hauled behind a, a guy's pickup from one community to another. Um. Many times it doesn't work for them to try to bother weave on our gravel roads and, and maybe there's just not a clean. Pass. So they're gonna be out on thirty with that. Well, then many times that's where you're gonna see ten, twelve, thirteen cars stacked up behind them for five, ten, twelve miles. And that unpredictability makes it harder on workforce as they're trying to get to work or trying to get to, get home. Um, also certainly people start to get frustrated and then they make some poor decisions and that's where we're gonna. Start to see accidents and that's oftentimes when we start to see uh, people get killed. And so uh, we're, we're, we're very mindful of these things. We're thinking about it from all angles and uh, so um. But that high, that uh, that, that traffic and, and being able to have predictability and be to have, able to have that extra ten miles an hour. Um, certainly also helps our businesses. Uh, because Iowa workforce development has done um, countless studies and uh, they've, they've pulled people. And people are willing to travel up to twenty to thirty miles further for work. On a four lane road versus a two lane road. And it's because of that safety factor and that predictability factor. Um. So as you think about Carroll, um, in Carroll County and our businesses here. Many of our larger businesses and even our smaller businesses have people that are commuting at least thirty miles every day. And over sixty percent of our workforce actually comes, comes into the county uh, every day for work. And so if, if we can increase that pool, uh, certainly that's gonna set us up, up for success in any business that we have. Um, even in healthcare, you know, as you've got nurses that are driving in or caregivers that are driving into our nursing homes. Um, it doesn't really matter. Everybody's impacted by workforce and anything that we can do to move the needle to get more people um, safer. And more predictable route to Carroll is gonna benefit us. Um. Bridges and culverts, um, were, you know, they're certainly looking to try to uh, use existing sizes. Um, active rail crossings, we're, they're taking a look at that. Um, and then one interchange pose for each bypass. So we're trying to minimize the amount of cost. Uh, in anything that we do, we're being very mindful of that constitutionally protected fund and how we're using those funds. So we can go on to the next slide. Um, so when we look at our alternatives, it'd be a three lane urban roadway uh, with two way left turn. Uh, through town on the existing alignment. That's what I talked about where you're necking it down as you go through a community, creating a turn lane. Um, still allowing traffic to flow. Um, certainly we have um, the possibility in some places uh, where you can even do a five lane urban work um, roadway. Um, there's probably almost enough right of way for that over in Jefferson where you can see that that road is extremely wide. Uh, you could, you could very likely, uh, once you neck it down, your speeds are gonna reduce a little, uh, quite a bit. And you're not gonna be doing sixty five through that, that neck down area. But if you've got enough room for two lanes, just like you do coming through Carroll and you have your turn lane, that's where you're gonna get your five. And it's not like we're having to do um, uh. Any grass median or anything like that. It's just like what you're seeing as you drive through Carroll right now. And that's what they're, they're taking a look at here. And then for, four lane rural bypasses considered, um, at, at first, you know, he wanted to take a look at, do we need to do anything with Glidden? Uh, Grand Junction, Clarence, and Calamus. And uh, so you'll see here in the study, um, at the end of it, um, he's not recommending anything to be done in, in uh, Glidden. Next slide. So layouts, we just kind of wanted to show you this. So uh, US thirty. Um, you've got your five uh, subsegments and this was how the highway was originally developed. So they're breaking it out into five different pieces. Uh, based upon that original construction. Uh, so you can go to the next slide. And the next one. So originally, you know, he kind of took a look at this, you know, if you were going to do anything with Glidden. Uh, you'd probably most likely go north because uh, most of the community is developed uh, on the, the south. Next slide. Um, over in Scranton, certainly you just, you're, you're not really disrupting anything. You're outside of the community. Uh, so that just kind of gives you an idea of how we're following the, the corridor and, and, and looking at existing right of way and everything that's there. Next slide. Uh, over here in Jefferson, same situation, plenty of right of way. Uh, we're going right, right down the existing corridor, not really changing anything there. Next slide. Grand Junction, um, recommendation would be to go south to avoid that rail spur to the north that I alluded about earlier. And then to smooth out and transition on the eastern side of the, of the town. So um, we would have uh, one additional. Uh, overpass that would have to be created there uh, to avoid the um, uh, rail spur that, that does spit out on the south side of town. And uh, but at the same time, um, people, you know, if you, if you picture a, a bypass, you're still going to have the existing road. Existing thirty is gonna run right where it always has. So you're turning to go up to uh, whether it's uh, um. Bowers and Peyton where they're doing a tremendous amount of manufacturing and what have you. Uh, that all still is there and, and will be, be fine. Next slide. Uh, then of course you're moving in, um. Moving further east uh, towards Ogden, uh, using the existing corridor, existing right of way. Uh, next slide. Uh, you get over to Ogden and we're, we're, we're right at the edge of town and now you're just transitioning uh, right into that four lane over there. Uh, so um, as I said, not a ton of uh, disruption here so far. Uh, next slide. So concept layouts from Lisbon to the wit, this is just gonna give you all, try to go real quick on this one because I know you're not really concerned about it, but. Uh, once again, this was developed for sections. So next slide. You can kind of see where those four sections exist and that's how they're proposing it to be done from a financial perspective. Uh, next slide. So then uh, they start Mechanicsville. Uh, they're kind of working their way down the existing corridor. Uh, Mechanicsville is an interesting um, situation because um, kind of like Arcadia, um, the. The rail spur is like right at the very entrance to the town. Um, and all of the community is developed on the north side. And right now, the school district for Mechanicsville, their buses are no longer driving thirty. They're all having to take gravel and come in. Uh, at a different route from the north because those buses were getting backed up out on the Highway thirty whenever there were trains coming down the rail spur. And there were also huge uh, safety concerns with those buses going across the rail. And then having to try to make a left or right turn with how much traffic they have on Highway thirty. So the school system has actually adjusted their bus routes, sticking a hundred percent to gravel. They won't even drive thirty anymore because they do, they deemed it unsafe. So I think that's pretty interesting to, to think about. Uh, now that their school district is being impacted like that and it, and they've realized a real safety concern. Uh, next slide. We've got uh, Eastern Mechanicsville, you're going out here. Um, as you get out, um, over that way, there are some protective, um. There are some uh, uh, nature, naturally protected areas, some wetlands and some things of that nature that. Uh, the DOT um, certainly has to work through um, EPA and, and, and uh. Uh, fish and wildlife and things of that nature. Uh, but um. We would still be sticking to the existing corridor. Right now they're planning to the bridge replacement. They're already going through those permits and things of that nature. So it's not like it's something that can't be done. It's just something to be wary of. Next slide. Uh, over here in Stanwood, uh, once again, most of the community is on that north side. So we can kind of stick to that existing right of way. Uh, so next slide. Here in Clarence, this is where I was talking about some daycare and some uh, other things that are on the north side of the corridor. Where the corridor is very narrow, where they're using all of the parking on both sides of the road. Uh, all of the businesses are located right there. So the proposal was to go south and tack. And uh, bypass the community and, and that was at their request. Uh, so I'd just like to make sure I get that out there. Uh, one thing that I do like to also talk about a little bit is, is that there's a stigma. Uh, for, from some people over the years that a bypass of a community is going to. Uh, negatively impact the community's growth or their retail. And there is absolutely no economic data that supports that. Perception sometimes can be reality. Folks will say, well, what about Marshalltown? Well, what about uh, maybe Sac City and R A of the world? Um, those communities already had other challenges well before a four lane road did their. And four lane road did not drive those communities into any type of an economic challenge. They were already there. So um, but what I can say on the flip side of that is. You look at Marshalltown now and they've had some significant business expansions. They've had a um. A manufacturing company for uh, cattle uh, and, and what have you that is now located there because of a four lane road. Uh, because when you look at site selection throughout the state of Iowa. Uh, one of the number one things that site selectors are looking for is close proximity, usually within about seven or so miles of a four lane road. And uh, that's just the way it is. Whether the economic development people believe that needs to be the case or not, the site selectors do. Uh, so you can have all the water in the world. You can have all the cheap power in the world. You can have uh, the uh. A huge uh, workforce available. And in, in many cases, those site selectors still will not select your community. They will go somewhere else if the road is four lane. So that is, that is just a reality. Um, it has been a hundred percent supported. Um, county boards supervisor, people who have taken part in transportation and economic development meetings of the state. Um, have sat through these presentations. Um, one of our uh. DOT or one of our uh, Highway thirty Coalition members is now up at the State House. His name is Tom Detterman. Um, his family was um, very involved in, in barges over in Clinton County for many years. He's been tied to transportation his entire career. Um, he's been a, a, a very longtime supporter of Highway thirty. Uh, but he has also sat through a number of those meetings and they will put out three business plans in some of these conferences. And they'll get together in a round table setting and they'll say, this business is looking to come. Here's your three different communities. Here is their um, resume of what they have to offer. And everybody lands on one and then they find out they're wrong because they missed the highway or the, the four lane highway part. And uh, and, and that. A community that had all of the rest of the attributes they needed was thrown out of the, the mix because it didn't have it. And he's seen that time and time again. So um, you can go to the next slide. Um, here we're, we're trying to uh, once again, kind of use the existing right of way. I think what you're seeing there is, is. Um, they're kind of realigning it a little bit though, um, just on the outskirts of town there. And then that's what that, that kind of that dip is kind of showing right there uh, over in Loudon. Uh, next slide. Uh, over here in Wheatland, we're following the existing corridor for the most part. You got a small little dip here. Um, and he, he was also kind of talking about making sure that they kind of take some of the, the turn a little bit out of the, the mix and. And make it a smoother transition uh, from an alignment perspective. So that's what you're kind of seeing there. Next slide. Um, another one of the areas to talk about the um. The river and the nat, nature preserve and things of that nature. This is just kind of highlighting some of the. Uh, bridges and, and culverts and tributaries that are along there uh, that we would need to address. Next slide. Um, here in Calamus, um, you can do it two ways, but you know, here's, here's where they're kind of showing that um, that small bypass to the north. Um, with a proper uh, realignment and, and a smooth transition. Next slide. Uh, Grand Mound, uh, pretty much. We're gonna take it out north and then they're gonna smoothly transition it back down to um, Highway thirty. And uh. Not a ton of disruption there. I think they were following an existing county road. Uh, so next slide. So then you got your cost opinions. Um, here's where they start to kind of break down what the road, um, the roadways, um. Different costs. Uh, you can kind of see that here on the slide. Um. Costs certainly gone up, um, you know. You'll see that here in the upcoming slides. Next slide please. Uh, once again, what he's looking at now is, is um, kind of trying to predict, okay, so if we were to start building, we could start in the west in Carroll. And we could start in the east. And start to build that roadway on both sides and come together. So that we've kind of got two projects that are going on both um, forty mile sections at the same time. So he was proposing section one for um, our area, section six for their area, and then we just keep filling the gap. Uh, so you know, with him, he's looking at design, um, any environmental um, right of way. Um, and then he's kind of listing the years out. As you can see here, you know, we can start in twenty twenty seven with some of that and keep going with that all the way out to twenty thirty five. Uh, we could start in construction in twenty thirty. We could uh, you know, push to complete a lot of, all of the sections by twenty thirty seven. Um, he's just kind of looking at it almost as a, a ten or twelve year plan. Uh, just to kind of spread it out enough so that you can kind of see how this could be done. I'm not saying that it might not take longer than that. Uh, certainly it's taken us. Twenty years or better to do some of these other sections of the east. So um, I always tell people it's a marathon, not a race and, and. And certainly we've got other priorities and I want to continue to make sure we're taking care of our existing infrastructure. It's just all about still progressing and moving the needle for the state uh, on, on an important corridor like Highway thirty. And you jump over here to some of the, oh, yep, you're fine. Perfect. Uh, cost opinions, timing of subsections. Now he starts to get into, he's looking at hard numbers. So you know, he can, he's kind of spread it out over a ten year period of time. You can see here, there's about uh, three hundred million from Carroll to Ogden, about three hundred and eleven million from Lisbon to DeWitt. So you're talking about six hundred and thirteen million. And I, I like to go back and make sure I remind everybody, we're talking about spreading this out over a decade or probably longer. Uh, so this is not a one, one lump sum thing by any means. And furthermore, the DOT has billions in their budget. So when you think about this and you start breaking these costs down on a per year basis. Over a ten or fifteen or whatever year period of time, we're talking about a small amount. I also like to point out when people say, well, we really can't afford that. We spent a hundred and fifty million dollars on a flyover off of Interstate thirty five, taking you into Ames. Those little flyovers are not inexpensive. And if we can prioritize.
How much was that again?
What's that?
How much again?
It was over a hundred million dollars and it ended up being more expensive because they ran into.
They had to redo it.
But uh, but even like the flyovers that are, what you're seeing for flyovers down on Interstate eighty and three eighty, these are not inexpensive. Um, you know, they're, they're tapping, you know, close to a million, a hundred billion dollars for a lot of these things. We're talking about doing forty miles of Highway thirty for about three flyovers. So the state of Iowa has the funding to do it. It's just a matter of how you're gonna prioritize it. Are you gonna continue to prioritize our urban centers? Are you going to put some money into our rural um, areas? So uh, next slide. So then we got into a cost benefit analysis and that's sometimes um, something that's overlooked. So then we got into a cost benefit analysis and that's sometimes um, something that's overlooked. People don't really realize um, how much transportation affects. Um, the state in terms of its costs. But uh, if you take um, our total cost, our right of ways, uh, long term maintenance and you add all of that up. Um, right now, for every dollar the state is spending, they would get a dollar twenty seven back on their return on investment. And this is strictly looking at it from a transportation time to sixty five. It doesn't actually totally impact what our uh, benefit analysis would be on emissions. It doesn't um, impact, it doesn't even um, get into safety in terms of what insurance. Um, costs are with accidents, loss of life and things of that nature. So some would say that our cost benefit analysis is probably closer to a dollar spent gets you um, close to a dollar fifty or a dollar forty. Um, just, just using some, some slight numbers that we talked about at at the conclusion. We did not have enough money. Uh, our study costed a little over a hundred thousand dollars. We didn't have enough money to get into emissions and safety. Um, and this was the first time that any private sector has ever done a study like this and a hundred thousand dollars was enough of a lift for our small coalition. Um, so this is travel saved, um, residential value. Um, everything is taken into account. So certainly a great return on investment. Um, also, when I talk about return on investment, we look at a, a look up on Highway twenty. And since Highway twenty was developed as four lane, it's saving our uh, semi traffic drivers an hour and a half. To travel across the state with goods. And if you figure what the cost is per hour to operate a semi. Our return on that billion dollar investment was approximately seven or eight years based upon the number of semis being over traveling the state now. So you think about investing a billion dollars in your return on investment just on the savings to semi transportation. Traffic alone on a seven, on via seven year return. So. Very interesting. These numbers get really big, but I try to, I try to get them back to something that we can all have think about. Most of us know people that own trucking companies or drive semis or are working with people that are operating as well. So, next slide. I guess that's the end of it. Um, I've talked a lot. Um, certainly I was trying to give you this abbreviated version.
Thank you.
Possibly good, but uh, as you can see, I'm very passionate about it.
Nobody got up and walked out, so you did okay.
What, um, what year did you guys do this study just now or?
No, this study was done in twenty twenty two.
Okay.
So then, one of the things you noticed on there was we left some of the analysis out of twenty twenty and twenty twenty one because certainly traffic was way down. So people working from home and pandemic related.
Yep. I have one question. When I heard you give this CCGP. You were very concerned about the board members who decide where these billions of dollars go being too metro centric.
Yes.
Um, did you, are the new board members spread out in different parts of the state now?
There is a bill that passed the House this year, um, that Tom Determan uh, championed. Uh, to break the state of Iowa, well, the state of Iowa already has uh, six or seven transportation districts. That's how the DOT is broken up. The bill states that each um, DOT commissioner. We should have one from every district and then one at large. So there is a bill, it's gone through the House. I don't know if we've gotten it through the Senate yet this year.
Okay.
Um, so I'm waiting here on that, but he got tremendous support, passed subcommittee, passed transportation, passed floor. Now we're just waiting for somebody to pick it up in the Senate, right? But yes, to your point, right now the DOT commissioners. Uh, all, all but I think maybe are within thirty miles of Des Moines. So then you start to hear, now that's where I circle back to that Interstate eighty six lane thing. Well, that's not what I'm talking about. That's certainly been a. A Des Moines register folks.
In their backyard.
Are you getting the same, uh, you know, you said you were very supportive of the Highway twenty. Are you getting the same feedback now that Highway twenty is done? From them helping the Highway thirty coalition?
You know, um, the Highway twenty coalition, well, Shirley Phillips actually just passed away. And uh, she has been on all of our calls ever since I started our statewide conference calls. We host, um, I, I, I put a, a conference call together. It's open to the public. Um.
You attend most of them.
On the call, um, every.
I used to be.
Every month, Scott's been on quite a few of them. Some of your predecessors have joined the calls as well. Um, but. That is on the second Thursday at eleven o'clock. Uh, Chris Whitaker from Region Twelve Council Government is our secretary for the Coalition. He's the one that helps me get the Zoom call lined up and and starts a call for me every time. Uh, but uh, it's open to the public. Uh, if you want to get information on that, certainly just contact us through the website or my email address is. Adam B. Schwers at gmail dot com. Um, you know, some. City council members, you know, some other people that might be interested in joining our call. Everybody is welcome. Uh, and really it's, it's usually about thirty, thirty five minutes. Uh, we try to hit, um. You know, we, we'll give you an update on what we as a coalition have been working on, uh, where we're at financially. Uh, we have the three uh, DOT commissioners that are in the districts, uh, report on construction updates. Uh, what their, you know, plans are when we're gonna have um, the start of construction, how construction is going. Uh, we usually hear from former uh, DOT Commissioner David Rose because he still keeps a, a strong finger on the pulse and always has some uh, good ideas. Tom Determan uh, is now at the House, so he's providing us an update. Uh, we actually have a political consultant. His name is Matt Miners from here in Carroll County. Uh, worked with CCGP for a while. Um, but he um, actually is, the Highway thirty coalition is paying him now uh, underneath a, a small contract. To help us with and help Tom with the bills that we're running at the state house. Um, so to answer your question, yes, there's a bill. There's a second bill that exists as well that passed subcommittee, passed transportation. And now we're waiting to be picked up in the Senate. Um, and that bill states that Highway thirty is a priority corridor for the state of Iowa and shall be finished as four lane. And so that's passed the House. We got it passed out of the House last year. We got it passed out of the House again this year, eighty something votes to. Thirteen or something. I mean, it was almost unanimous. Uh, we just need Senator. Uh, a Senator or two to pick that up and run it through their chambers so we can get that to the governor's desk. Our hope is, is that by having a bill that states that Highway thirty is a priority uh, for the state, if the governor signs that. That then sends a very clear message to our DOT staff and our DOT commission that this is a priority. And we're not telling you necessarily how to do your job, but funding needs to continue. Every five year plan towards the goal of four lane. And that's really where we're trying to get at this point.
I just have one last question. Did getting rid of the two stoplights help anything in Carroll? Did Highway thirty push to get rid of those two?
I have gotten so many positive calls from our, our trucking establishments, even just from general people in the public. Uh, having those two lights gone has really helped flow of traffic. And you know, it. There's just so many positives that came out of it. I mean, I own businesses all around uh, the corner of Port Street. And I've had a lot of people ask me, how do you feel about it? And I was like, it's the best thing ever. Because what would happen on Highway thirty going west especially is you've got that incline and a lot of semis would get kind of. Stuck there. And if you're hauling a pot of cattle or hogs, guess what slops out of the back and all over Highway thirty? And that's not.
It's a good way to end your presentation.
Yeah, yeah. So, and then also, I mean, that light was turned to yellow a lot of the winter because of the gradual incline. People get stuck. So we'd go flashing multitude of times just because it's like the vision. So. I've, I've seen, I've heard nothing but good positive. And I think people will adjust to their traffic patterns. If they don't feel comfortable going down to an uncontrolled intersection, they can go a block west or block east and go get one. So.
Um. Who started Highway thirty coalition?
Highway thirty coalition was formed by a bunch of volunteers, um. In eastern Iowa, Edith Pepper, Tom Determan, Dave Rose were all involved in all of that. Um, one. One of our former city managers, Gerald Clausen, uh, was here. He was involved with it, with it from the time that he got to Carroll on. Um, we've had Rick Hunsecker, Chris Whitaker, those guys have all participated. Uh, former economic development director, uh, Jim Gossett was heavily involved uh, for a lot of years. Um, so there's, there's been a, a pretty solid core between Clinton County and Carroll County kind of leading the charge. And then we've sprinkled in mayor supervisors and the rest from Cedar County and from um, Marshalltown. We used to do some of our in-person meetings in Marshalltown. Uh, so folks at Ames, uh, we had a few of our uh, in-person meetings in Ames. Uh, so yeah, we've. But those were kind of, I would say, my core people. And that was long before I was ever involved.
There's always, there's always been a big core.
How long have you been involved?
I've been involved since uh, I was on city council in Carroll, so two thousand and eight.
And do you foresee it moving forward in what timeframe?
Well, I mean, as you can.
How many great grandkids are you gonna have before it happened?
Yeah, right. Um, so as you can see, I mean, um, it's a slow pull, but. We've had success on the eastern side and if we can play proper defense and um, shut down the super two on out there. And continue to promote Ogden to Carroll, you know, I'd like to say that it's possibly in the next twenty years.
Okay. What is that super two? I, can you explain that to me a little bit?
So the super two development is where when you leave Carroll, headed to Dennison. And then you get on some of those hills and you put a little turning lane in.
Slower traffic, keep right.
Slower traffic, keep right. Well, what it really ends up being is is uh, slower traffic keeps right, speeds up and you never get around them. And then you're right back to the same thing after that. Yeah. It really, it doesn't really help with any of the, there's a significant number of intersections where. You're still having to stop traffic, so people.
It also gives the left turn lane too and so.
In some cases, yes.
So that's okay. Thank you.
But it doesn't change your speed. Stay for excuse all changes.
No.
Yep.
Any more questions? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thanks. Item five, secondary roads. Zach, you have some equipment quotes. Good morning.
So what I have today is uh, the equipment for. Our self pile trucks, so the box hydraulics, uh, so equipment, file laying, sander. Be able to outfit the, the two trucks that we purchased here uh, a few weeks ago. Um, so there's three different quotes that have different things broken down. All quotes show, um. It basically is one of what we would need for, for outfitting a truck. So. Uh, we, we would need two of everything that showed up on those quotes, but the two trucks. Um, the cost has gone up a little bit since the last time we bought the equipment.
How about if I bring the cost down a little bit?
Love to see you do that.
Eight hundred bucks.
Yeah, the math was wrong. Courtney copied and pasted was off by four hundred bucks.
Okay. There you go. I'll take it.
Copy and paste it, what?
Zach's information. Maybe it came, man, I thought it was.
Well, it's in, it's in the, in the.
Oh, description.
I copied that from the email that he sent.
It'd be one sixteen, three seventy three thirty.
I did a math on.
In two thirty twos of.
So there's, there's eight hundred bucks less, right?
There you go.
But that still does.
You caught that too, huh?
Yeah. Um. And I think you've told us before that you like highways, so you don't get a competitive quote.
Well, we're trying to stick with the same, I guess, brand of equipment. So things are interchangeable with, with the current. Current plows and current, everything, everything we have from a hydraulic standpoint and from our. Uh, the attachments I go on. So it makes it very easy that if you have things break down and you walk. And use another piece of equipment. So, um, I know when I first started, we did kind of more competitive quote. Uh, with other, other vendors and they were, they're right in the. In ballpark of wherever of people were, things have gone a little bit with steel and everything else. But I think that's kind of been industry wide, not just one event.
And so these are parts only and then your people put them on or is this installed?
This is, this is all the parts. They're, like, there's a capsule in there that they build for us, but we. Attach everything and and build the hydraulic system and put, put it, put it all together basically.
And these things are shot. I mean, there's no way we can reuse any of this stuff for the.
Of the old truck we have. Yeah, it's, and, and the oldest ones that we're rid of, don't, they're not even quite the same. They're set up a little bit differently.
Okay, so that's a lot of money, man.
It's, it's a, yeah, they're, and a lot of them, it's not even the original equipment. It's, it's been replaced because of.
Right.
So, so.
Yeah, I get, I get it. I get it. But you're not talking.
We do keep all the, our old wings and plows. We never trade those in because we end up, whether they get damaged or. Or rust out or something falls apart, you know, we're reusing those parts all at all times, but uh. Definitely not uh, not something we can put on the, a new truck.
You're not talking much cheaper than the whole chassis for the cost of that stuff. It's just nuts. So, so on these though, um, we install your workers.
Correct.
County employees.
Yep.
And how long does that take to do that usually?
It all depends on the, on the other workload that we have, what we have down. We dedicate time to it, you know, it could be a, probably get a truck done in. Six weeks, maybe, missed two years out. Wow. But it's, it's a process from the electrical and hydraulics and, you know, leaving the box put on. Um, I mean, everything is. The frame's cut off of the front to be able to put the front hitch for the file. It's shortened in the back. I mean, it's, there's a lot of modifications to get us, and the effect of it needs to. Yep.
Okay.
But the nice, the, the, the best, one of the best reasons for doing it that way is we're able to stay consistent and build it the same way. So that they're put together the same way. That's, that's a big huge benefit for us as well.
So these are stocked? There's no lead time on them?
No, they, it, it needs to be ordered. Um, it's the, the. Lead time for these different parts vary. Um, some could be as short as two months, up to probably six months. It's better than what it has been. Uh, maybe even, maybe I would say maybe eight months for a couple of things, but that's what I'm trying to use.
So when are, when are the trucks expected?
Um, July timeframe.
So I mean, these could all, the timing could work out good for everything.
That's why I'm trying to keep going on this. I, there could be some of this that may not be here in July. Uh, it may be a little bit later, but our intent was these would be built this fall or winter. If we can get it going sooner, we will, but. Um, it's physically your twenty six. And, and the cost of the chassis and this equipment does fall within, uh, within the budget that we proposed.
For each truck.
We're applying call and allow.
Gotcha.
So I guess you're looking for a motion to spend two hundred and thirty two thousand, seven hundred and forty six dollars and sixty cents?
And it's in the budget? I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve to outfit two of the new trucks coming in.
Okay, I'll second.
And we have a second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carried. B, department update.
Uh, two different things, uh, mostly construction related. Uh, crack filling projects. We have a contractor moving in today. To start that, we're doing multiple roads uh, around the county, but they're starting on E sixteen up by Greeta. And crap will be crack filling from there east to.
Reza always gets priority.
Always.
They picked that road to start this year. Uh, but they, they'll be starting and they'll be bouncing around as as they go through. Uh, the road will be closed to traffic, it'll be open to traffic just for the. Fighers and pile of cars. So, um, to whether, our weather.
I think I did hear something about that on the radio station also.
Yeah, I put a, put a little notice on. Try, I'm gonna try to follow them as best I can. Uh, sometimes we don't always know exactly when they're switching from one road to another, but we'll do our best to try to keep up with that. Uh, second project.
Do you know how many of them you're gonna be doing?
There's about seven different locations. I can tell you imagine what I'm looking at.
Do you want those for the paper or not?
One. I know you said that you're doing east of Timlin and from one forty one to Alber.
It's a lot of the asphalt, but I'd say it's probably from eight to fifteen years old, roughly.
We're going from Litterdale, uh, thirty to Litterdale. That ain't that old, is it?
It's wild here. It's seven years old.
Oh, well, I must be having a lot of fun. Time's going fast.
I see they did. North on Highway thirties that built was rock, so they're east of town. They do so. When they, when they gonna start that?
Uh, they're, they're starting this today.
Today. Just by here, didn't.
It looks like you're gonna be here a while.
I think roughly three weeks. They, they move pretty quick, whatever.
Who's doing this?
Dan Coe.
Dan Coe.
I, I'm good with it. And you're gonna keep um, posting or keep the. And you're gonna keep um posting or keep the. Radio station informed or doing the public announcements ahead of time?
Definitely can on that, on where they're at. I have to move quickly and it's hard to. You can probably do it, I can manage.
Thank you.
Uh second project is our HMA resurfacing. Uh they were originally planning on starting this week. Because of weather, they did push it back a week to the fourteenth. They're planning on starting next Monday.
I gotta redo my old newspaper article.
There you go.
Are they still gonna be done in May or around the first May?
It'd be, it'd be, it'd go longer than that. It'd be a six-week project. It's a little. Weather dependent there. It doesn't help how that process all.
June timeframe perhaps?
I would, I would have, I would think, like I think that they'd be done by, by June.
On all of them?
I'm thinking so. Depends when they really get started. May, June, maybe. Because of the milling process and then two of the, two of the sections have a, have the base widening for the paved shoulder.
And there again, there's gonna be pile of cars, right?
Yep, there'll be flaggers to pile cars.
This is for the blacktop we're gonna do here.
Correct.
Yeah.
The, the, the different, the four different sections.
We're the milling squad.
Um so some of the, most of them will be going back to the plant site for them to incorporate in, because users will have. And then Carroll County retains the, the remaining stuff that's left over for reuse.
I saw down on the rock pile, it looks like they're about half done of the concrete crushing.
Yeah, they've been half done. They're, they're making a good headway.
It's a cool little factory.
It, it is. It's a process.
So reuse that for gravel roads or what do we use that for?
Um different places. A lot of it we use on our shoulders. Other paved roads will mix that with milling or by itself and either for some more shelling material. We have put it on gravel roads sometimes as well. Uh we usually top with gravel if it is sho- sharper material.
Gotcha.
Um so we do put on gravel roads at some places to build up a, build up a base or get the crown back at a little bit. Probably more for shoulders than that.
And with that milling down the road, so we won't stop block, dark blacktop into about the middle of June, then you're thinking.
It'll be, I'm thinking it'll be done by November.
Everything will be done.
Milling it, they'll start.
On all thirteen miles of it.
Correct.
Okay.
Couple. Well, it's a week and a half of milling and then they'll start their base widening. I believe is where they're gonna do it. And then they're going to do the intermediate surface like asphalt. So.
Right.
They'll be passing around from different segment based on what. What process they're doing.
Gotcha.
And then uh the bridge south of Ralston, um that we're hoping to get a pre-con. Done this week with the contractor to find when they, when they start up, when they're gonna start that project. So. We're making progress there. So but that will be another one that will. More than likely the one we relatively quickly would.
Because of the endangered species act.
Correct. Things are ramping up.
You could have the bridge built and that can't open it up because of the endangered species. Now that that happened once in my term here, up by Landville.
That's what I have for this week.
Any questions for Zach? All right, thank you, Zach.
Roads are holding up, gravel will hold up pretty.
Not too bad. I mean, there's spots, we're putting all bottom gravel in the spots, or there's maybe some. Um light spots or holes in that, of that, but overall.
Had no big crossbar over.
I haven't, I haven't heard of any at this point in time, so really holding decent for what we. For this time of year.
It's great.
Item number seven, I'm sorry, item six, manure management updates. Mark Itop, number three, section twenty-four, Roselle Township. Change crop rotation or optimal meals. Floyd Cluckey, section thirty-two, Newton Township, original plan. PI three sixty-four finisher, section seven, Wheatland Township, original plan. Item seven, committee reports.
I can go. Last week, um. Had a closed session on Wednesday and this week I have newspaper and radio and that's it. Thank you.
I can go next. Last week, Monday, I met with the assessor to understand the mineral rights. We got an email on the forty-eight thousand. Do you guys know who pays that? Twin Rivers. I thought it was probably the property owners, but Twin Rivers is the. Company that'll be paying that.
Was it?
Or. Um up by Liddledale area, if they find hydrogen.
Oh, okay.
Something new we've never had or we've never, in my ears, Gene, if they ever taxed for mineral rights. So. So the last two centuries, they haven't. Tuesday, um. I sent all you guys, created a a budget spreadsheet for the closed session. I did contact Adam about the highway thirty presentation today. Wednesday was closed session. I did spend some time at secondary roads. With um Paul and finalized in our county wall maps. Hopefully we can get that up pretty quick. Also had several conversations with Zach and I sent you guys some texts on those. Thursday, the um. Canopy out front, it's been discussed many times. Um got ahold of baiting and they politely declined to quote it. Evidently that rerod goes down into the basement, whatever, so. Zach is gonna get um. Start getting quotes on the roof leaking and the whole structure may not, it may be way more than we wanna spend, but. And then I also met with Sarah on valuations and she um. Yeah, had waiting lines and I thought her um that her, her descriptions of. What an assessment is, were very good. All the people, I listened to several of them.
She did a great job. I'd love to talk to her also. She's doing a nice job up there.
Um I did give the um interim county attorney a list of all the findings from last year's audits, including the time card thing. Um. Also on Thursday, I talked with Christie Jenkins from New Opportunities and Taya from Manning Recovery. About the opioid funds. Like I sent you guys all a copy of the letter. I sent them. Friday was a chamber coffee at Haley Equipment. And then we had a county. Roundtable meeting with Rick Sinker, Chris Whitaker and Kimberly Teefentaller on increasing attendance, possible sites and dates. And then Mike Heim from Maple River called about wanting wayfinding signs along the sock rail trail. Mike says he'll put it on their agenda. At the next conservation meeting. And I think all of us fielded many calls, texts and emails about the assessments and how property taxes are calculated. And I did spend a lot of quality time with Courtney on fiscal year twenty-six budget stuff. This week, tomorrow, six thirty AM, April, um board meeting for the solid waste commission. At noon, CCGP meeting, Eddie Holtz has done a presentation about Pig Easy. Thursday is road claims. Thursday evening is region twelve policy council. Friday is courthouse claims. And then lastly, I'm looking for guidance on opioid funds that CD comes due this Saturday. Do we wanna do another roundtable with the stakeholders or um I've had two people say they're ready to give a presentation. To the board and I can start scheduling those as early as next week.
Presentation, presentation.
I think you need presentations also.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, Tuesday, uh. I spoke to Manning Rotary, went very well. Uh a lot of good questions on it, uh. People, I think every time we go out, I s- I find that people are. Quite interested in what we're doing, you know, and. I think for the most part, people are very satisfied with what I'm doing. Uh Wednesday, I attended the closed session here. Uh I did have, like most, just felt some questions. In regard to the budget and assessments, and I will say that. Uh one of the individuals that I spent some time with. Really spoke very highly how Sarah. Addressed thing. And he was asking me the question, see if I, he'd get the same story from me, but. Yeah, it's so. She's, she's doing a good job up there. Uh this week, I just got CCGP for right now.
All right, well, I had to prove a few things uh this last week. And Courtney, you got that bill from Jeff Cole and I take it on the. Seventy, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for hazmat five. Region five.
Haven't seen it, but.
You'll be getting one then, so we had to prove that. Um we uh had to approve a lease renewal for the child area care daycare center, went from eleven hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars. But now it's gonna include some water and electrical, which it didn't before, but we're still paying more than we did last year a little bit. And also worked on electrical code to replace the electricity in the child. Care center. They keep losing electricity. Had a couple codes, one was just gonna. Get them by and I think as a, as a group, we're kind of deciding that we need to do it right. We need to bite the bullet and spend the bucks for that. Same thing, I fielded some calls on some levy information, the taxes from some constituents. And then had the closed session on Wednesday. All I've got going this week with Scott on the region twelve policy meeting at six thirty or six o'clock Thursday night. That's all I have for this week.
Yeah, Courtney, I do, I did appreciate some of the information you sent to us about property taxes. And again, I think for the public's. Information. According to this one form that we got, Carroll County's on, uh this is based on last year's taxes. We're in the bottom twelve of those people. So I think, you know, uh.
Our tax ask is less or is over a hundred thousand dollars less than our tax ask was. Last year. Not speaking for cities or schools, but just the county itself. Hey, do we have any comments from those that attend? Courtney, next week, I realize we're starting ten minutes early.
Okay, um we'll start meeting at eight fifty. Um the board book can make a decision on their appointment for county attorney. Um there'll be a resolution that needs to be passed regarding that. And at nine o'clock, we have our fiscal twenty-six budget hearing. Um after the hearing, there'll be a couple resolutions on that. And then um I have written down Manning Recovery opioid presentation. And it's the day.
Alrighty, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moving. A second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion approved. We are adjourned.